Okay, folks, just want to welcome everyone to the Jersey, uh, meeting of the Jersey Village City Council for Monday, March 18th, 2024. The time is now 7:04 PM. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Um, Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum present?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Um, uh, next up, we have invocation pledge of allegiance, uh, by, uh, Pastor, Dr. Avery Lamell.
Thank you, Mayor Warren. Let us pray together. Heavenly Father, you are the creator of all things. We thank you so much that we're able to ask your blessings upon this meeting time. Thank you for all those who are present and do ask that you would bless them in their individual respective needs, and that you'd bless this great community, the city of Jersey Village. There may be a shining light of hope that you would continue to, Father, to give wisdom and guidance to our council members, that you'd continue to guide our mayor and chiefs and all of our first responders, let's protect them, keep them safe, and continue to allow them to serve in such an admirable way. Father, we want to honor you and bless your name, and so we invoke your presence in this place. In Jesus' name that I pray. Amen. Let us recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Pastor. Next up, we have a presentation of Employee of the Month Award for March 2024. Austin Bleese.
Mayor and councilors, our March 2024 Employee of the Month is Captain Kevin Sullivan. Kevin started with the city in February of 2016 as a part-time firefighter. He joined the city full-time in November of 2020 and was promoted to captain in October of 2022. His remarkable ability to inspire and motivate his crew is unparalleled. With a deep well of knowledge in our profession, Captain Sullivan excels not only in teaching but in fostering an environment where his team learns from one another, cultivating a culture of mutual growth and leadership. His approach to delegating responsibilities empowers each member to navigate challenges independently, promoting personal and collective development. Beyond his exemplary leadership within his crew, Captain Sullivan has consistently gone above and beyond in his role. Recently, he skillfully managed the acquisition and outfitting of our new pumper and ladder trucks, ensuring that our equipment is of the highest standard. His oversight in the integration of a new squad pickup truck has been flawless, demonstrating his capacity for ma- managing complex tasks with ease. Moreover, his involvement in our uniform transition spanning the research, design, and procurement has been invaluable in showcasing his dedication to every facet of our department's operations. He also did the design for the new logo, which he will now proudly model right here as well. Furthermore, his role in developing policies and protocols has solidified our department's foundations, setting us on the path of toward excellence. Captain Sullivan's contributions to our department extend far beyond his designated duties. His knowledge, drive, and commitment to bettering the team and the services they provide to the city are exemplary. To say he is a great asset is an understatement. Captain Sullivan embodies the spirit of leadership, innovation, and dedication that the entire department inspires too. Congratulations, Captain Sullivan. We're honored to name you the March 2024 Employee of the Month.
I'm glad they were able to stick around just in time to see that.
I was about to say, they're already back on the, back at it. Uh, congratulations, Captain Sullivan. Uh, very well deserved. We're going to go ahead and move on to citizen comments. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to the city council will be heard at this time in compliance with the Texas Civil Meetings Act. Unless the subject matter or the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to the city council. Uh, first card I have is from Jim Fields.
Mayor and city council, my name is Jim Fields. I live in 16413 St. Hillier. Thanks again for allowing me to contribute to tonight's meeting. I want to praise you, Mayor, and the city council for the sidewalk. It's very subtle, but it's very important. That old sidewalk you put between, um, Foundry Church and Village Drive. Thank you again. It helps commerce and it also helps for safety of people walking. Thank you again. That did not go unnoticed. Thank you. Moving on here, I wanted to say on the agenda, Mayor, last time you said that the city manager report is now part of the agenda. Is that true?
It always has been.
Well, thank you, okay. Cause when I look at the, um, the handout, it says city's manager report, but it doesn't say it's an agenda. But thank you very much, cause attended so many of them, I didn't realize that. And I'm sure other people appreciate that, too. I would say on the stop signs that we've been putting in, I'm hoping they'll put all of the signage back. We're missing right now on the corner of Village Green and Real Grand. It used to say all stop on all signs. So I think I was put there for a reason, and can they have them please return it? Um, on the golf course, we now put $9 million into a new clubhouse, so in your calculations for the golf course making money, that needs to be deducted because of revenues, um, the money that did not come from the revenues of the golf course. So now the golf course now is in arrears of $9 million and add whatever interest that's gonna be on it. Cause that's what took, goes into the bonds we're using for repairing the infrastructure. Um, also bonds, we should vote, I am encouraging everyone on city council to vote no, as the bonds are not needed. The city has over $20 million in cash, has property for $8 million. And I don't know what the total is, probably close to $30 million for infra- infrastructure repairs. Those come first before anything. We should not put the burden on the citizens because it, when we have the money at hand, the essential things need to be paid for first. Anything extra, baseball stadiums, more apartments, a new city hall should take backseat. Also on code enforcement, again, this is a responsibility of the city manager, and I have been campaigning again, and there's, again, if you walk through the neighborhood, just look, they're not hidden. There are more abandoned vehicles. And I'm hoping that more interest will be taken so that we can protect our property values. It doesn't cost a cent to do that. We have one, one car that's blocking one of the entrances, in entrance and exit on, in Jersey Village, and it has an expired, um, registration on it, and I'm hoping somebody, been there for three weeks. I hope that somebody will take care of that. Um, last thing is the tourist two meetings. I still don't know any reason why they're not open to the public. These funds, you told me one time, this is like a private entity. No, it's not. You're using public funds. And you're making decisions that will possibly endet us for decades. And I don't know any reason why they should be held in secrecy. If you're just, even when your discussion with the developer and/or even, uh, with a developer or, or even with attorneys there, I, I, if you could please explain that to everybody in detail, why, I think that'd be very helpful. Last thing is the, uh, the bond committee. Is that gonna be for the pool bond? Cause after the two or three last city council meetings I attended, will that, uh, is that committee you're trying to beat, you're trying to build right now? That bond committee?
The bond committee is intended to look at whatever proposed, it depends on what the bond committee decides. It's bonds that would be coming up potentially for the ballot.
Okay, cause, oh, thank you for clarifying, Mayor, because prior to this, I heard at a city council meeting that you're gonna get a committee together for the pool bond, and I was just, wanted to have clarification.
The pool bond is one of the things that's being considered for an upcoming ballot.
Wonderful, alright. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for allowing me to contribute.
Alright, thank you, Jim. Uh, next card I have is, do you have something?
Yeah, I appreciate the sidewalk compliment. I pushed for that very hard and, uh, or initiated the discussion. And I've had several people reach out about that one sidewalk. It's kind of funny how much impact it had.
Very true. Um, next comment card I have is from Doris Mahalik.
Doris Mahalik, 16002 KeVendale. I'm here to invite everybody to a presentation done by Andy Kahn with Crime Stoppers. Um, the presentation is hosted by the Jersey Village Women's Group, but it's open to everybody. It will be held here in the Civic Center on April the 9th at 7 o'clock. I've seen a presentation by Andy before. The information's very interesting, and some of the data is something that you won't see anywhere else. Uh, Crime Stoppers plays an important role in dealing with crime in the Houston area, so I hope that everyone comes out to show their support. Again, it's April the 9th at 7 o'clock here. Invite all your friends and neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Doris. Very important topic, for sure. Uh, the next card I have is from Michael Stenbridge.
Good evening. Michael Stenbridge, 15422 Jersey Drive. Um, first of all, I'd like to apologize for the last time I was here. I believe I was a bit abrasive. Um, I felt very passionate about what I was speaking on, but, uh, that's, you know, there's other ways to handle business, civil and everything. So I apologize to all of you. Um, I would, uh, I'd like to say that, uh, James Fields is, has, you know, talked to us. Uh, we've gotten to know him, and, uh, we're advocating and endorsing him. Um, we believe that dissension is, is, um, a healthy part, essential part, powerful part of democracy. And, um, and I know that you all dissent when you feel to, it's necessary to dissent for a constituent or an issue or a cause. And, um, we just, uh, you know, we like that, that he, that he's concerned about, about taxes. I know you've done great stuff for taxes, Bobby. You've done numerous tax cuts, uh, but we feel there needs to be more, maybe. Um, and, and, and we know that, you know, he's of that mind frame, and, uh, we just, um, we just feel like it's, it's time for a change. That's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Michael. Uh, next comment card I have is from Rick Faircloth.
Good evening. I'm Rick Faircloth. Uh, live at 1601 Lakeview, just right down the street. I'm one of the old guys, been here 45 years. Uh, I got two things to talk about tonight. One, uh, I wanna give a, a really outstanding attaboy to Public Works. Uh, my wife and I, the last few weeks with everybody, uh, are raking leaves. Unbelievable. We have just so many leaves, couldn't believe it. And, uh, and we actually had one of the Public Works employees, uh, and we got to, to, to meet this person. Her name is Jordan. And she actually stopped by and wanted to know if we were okay, and if there was anything that they could do to assist us. And then we find out she had moved here recently and was, had only been with the city from New Jersey. And, uh, a very pleasant, uh, uh, young lady, and, uh, she always comes by and honks. And, and so we wanted to kind of let Public Works know. Uh, my wife did call and talk to the Public Works manager, I think, and, uh, just wanted to let you know that you got a real good employee. And I, I hope that kind of goes through the rest of the, of the, of the staff here. It, uh, it, it's really, really important, and it's really made us feel, feel good. So, uh, the upbringing of that young lady, they did good. Uh, the second, the, the second thing is that our bridge at the golf course, I know will be opening back up whenever that comes back open. But I've noticed in the past, uh, you know, that bridge is, is, is a load-rated bridge. It has a weight capacity. And I had sent a, a note to, to the city manager addressing some comments that, uh, there's only a yield sign on one side, and then there's a stop sign on the other. And it seems like there should be two full stop signs on both sides, because I've seen two or three cars side by side passing over that. And, uh, it just doesn't seem as, as a good safety issue. And, uh, maybe there should be a sign that just say only single lane only, and only one lane, one vehicle on the bridge at a time. Something of that from a, from a safety point of view. But, uh, that's, that's my other comment, and again, thank you for the opportunity to, to speak to council. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Rick. Uh, the last comment card I have is from Kimberly A. Now.
My name is Kimberly A. Now, and I live at 15601 Singapore Lane. As my 30th installment, Jersey Village prepared to jump into the unknown future of technology as DVDs replaced VHS tapes while the first Bluetooth-enabled headset and the BlackBerry 850 e-mailed enabled pager were available to consumers. Recommendations by the Planning and Zoning Commission to reclassify many parts of the zoning map began as more areas were annexed west of Jones Road, such as the former MUDS 199 and 247. The Director of Public Works and the City Engineer presented items for discussion such as infrastructure maintenance of streets and sidewalks, water and wastewater plant facilities, drainage projects, create a code enforcement position for animal control, and federal funding available for proposed hike and bike trails within the village to also connect with a White Oak Bayou Trail that would lead into the city of Houston's Trails. Fire Chief Kathy Hutchins discussed current and future conditions and needs for the department such as facilities, equipment, and personnel. This led to the municipal complex expansion issue of purchasing land for a new city hall facility and to then renovate the current city hall building to become the fire station. The traffic signal for Jones Road at Village Green Drive was installed but needed to be adjusted so that the right turn only and left turn only signals work simultaneously and to add a right turn on red stop sign for 290 onto Jones. A report from the Golf Course Advisory Committee recommended that it is feasible to acquire the Jersey Meadow Golf Course based on the independent appraisal and by the whole committee. The report further stated the acquisition would be a quality contribution to the benefit of the citizens of Jersey Village while opening the possibility of a civic center, tennis club, and affiliated complexes for use by residents and others. At a subsequent council meeting, city staff gave three detailed options for city hall location possibilities, such as the first option to buy the Burgess Manufacturing Land adjacent to the south side of the current city hall. The second was to purchase the Church of Christ 3.6 acre property with the sanctuary to be the space for city council, board, and commission meetings, and municipal court, as well as convention and meeting space, while 8,000 square feet would be remodeled into city offices and demolished the remaining square footage. City Manager Dell Brown recommended the third option where the sanctuary would be used as planned, but the other spaces would be demolished for new construction buildings to avoid unknown problems with remodeling. Mr. Brown also supported the first option of eventually buying the Burgess Manufacturing Land as the area was too small for office space but good for parking or use by the fire department. The motion was unanimous to keep the 1995 ordinance 95-02 as written to continue with the teen curfew hours. Post elementary school requested to celebrate their 40th anniversary in April 2000 along with Founder's Day. During a work session, community-oriented policing officers explained their educational programs. Art Woolery had various topics for the business community, and Sandra Watson taught in schools that student citizens attended. While council discussed her working at schools outside of the village's city limits, Cyfair ISD attending representatives indicated their reimbursement to the city for her hours working beyond the limits. The city announcement marquees would only be used for community interests such as city council meetings, city boards, commissions, and committees meetings, town hall meetings, and city-sponsored events and activities such as Parks and Recreation's upcoming concert in the park and Founder's Day celebration. Harris County was finalizing the plans for the Senate Avenue rehabilitation to expand the width of the street. The fire department would sponsor a New Year's get-together at the fire station to have extra people available in case of emergencies on December 31st during the countdown to the new millennium. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Okay, that's all the comment cards we have, which brings us to the city manager's report. Austin Bleese.
Mayor and councilors, the city manager's report is in front of you. Uh, in order to save a question about when the new clubhouse is coming, I'll just say it's coming soon. In order to save a question about when the new clubhouse is coming, I'll just say it's coming soon. But the, we had a meeting today with the concession there. It looks like Little Meadow Kitchen and Cocktails will be opening in early April. And we are looking forward to getting everything moved into the clubhouse soon. We should be open definitely before the middle of the month, but we still don't have a firm date. We're waiting on a couple of pieces for furniture, inspections, and those types of things. But early, the first, first part of April for sure. So once we have a firm date, we'll let everybody know. And happy to answer any other questions anybody might have.
So Little Meadow Kitchen and Cocktails is the name?
That's, that's the proposed name, yes.
I like it. I like it. Questions for the city manager from council?
I'll try to spit this out in at least a couple of sentences. I've been getting several emails and comments on water bills and things. I think as people start to water now for spring, they're becoming a lot more aware. I've heard of several people with new irrigation meters. And obviously haven't shown a lot of difference in their bills because they haven't used a lot of the irrigation water because we've been blessed with rain. That said, the questions I've received are regarding the charge, like a $15 billing fee for, for irrigation in addition to the sewer charge, in addition to the regular billing charge. Why is that necessary, et cetera? Is it, and if it were to be removed, like if you weren't to use your irrigation meter during the fall and into the winter, how could you stop that? The other thing was irrigation charges, there's a difference between, currently there's a difference between that and regular water fees.
Yeah, so the, the base fee is charged on every active meter. If somebody wants to inactivate a meter, they can simply call up the water department, 22111. And we can inactivate their meter. If people go away for over a month or whatever, we've had people do that too. So they just need to call in and ask to have their irrigation meter inactivated. And that would take that charge off for, for the month.
Is it possible that we can put that on the website or something to let people know?
Absolutely, yeah.
When they get an irrigation meter? Thanks.
Piggybacking off that, I've had, I had two people claim that it's not clear on the website that there is a $15 a month fee with the water meter, that the water meter price is available, but it doesn't say when you're purchasing it, there's nothing within the paperwork or anything online saying that there will be a $15 fee every month. I just want to know if that's something we can rectify?
Yeah, I mean, that's a part of the rate structure. That's a part of everything. It's in there about the base fee. But we can try and make that a little more clear as well. As for the, the usage rates, you know, I went back to 2013. I didn't have time to go back any further. But since 2013, the water rates for the sprinkler usage have been about 33 to 50% higher than what the residential usage is. State law does require us to have a rate structure that's cost-based and does not encourage excessive use of water. And one of the specific examples is the increasing block rate schedules for that. The base fees are based upon just what we need to operate the system and everything like that. But it's been, like, block rate schedules for rates are very common across the state. It's one of the things that Texas Administrative Code requires. And I'm sure if we went back to 2000 and earlier, there would have been an increase of probably about 50%, just like it was since 2013 when I went back and looked.
Okay, thank you.
Can I get a clarification on the $15 a month? Why is that necessary? Because I understand with the idea of overhead costs, I was under the impression that that was worked into our water meter, like the water rates and then the irrigation and sewer rates. Because with, I've always been under the impression that the meters are being read digitally. So originally I would understand, you know, when you have somebody walking a street and having to physically go and read a meter, I understand charging for that. But I'm just curious with now, is that really, if that's what it's for, is that truly justifiable as far as a fee every month?
I mean, I think we can definitely justify the fee at being at that rate. And once again, it goes kind of back to the same water rates or sewer rates and everything else. We, we have the, the projects that we need to do and the, the expenses that we have. And we can get the revenue, whichever ways we want to try and splice that up. If we wanted to put that more into the water rates, we could. But we've had the water rate base fee for, since back to 2013, as, as far back as I went. And that, once again, it's pretty common for every city.
Any other questions from council members for the city manager?
I have one more about code enforcement, if you don't mind. I just wanted to make sure that I was giving the right information to our resident that is frustrated about how, about the situation where somebody builds, pulls a permit for building and then that permit expires and that person has not made progress or maybe made halfway progress. And then they buy another permit and then it continues on for, for some of us, it seems like the rest of our lives. And there's no finished product. Is there, if a person felt like that is something that needs to be changed, is that something that they should bring to council? Or should they ask for that to go to planning and zoning? What's that order of operations?
I think, you know, obviously petition your elected officials is obviously a great step. It has to go to one of the boards. I want to say it's the Building Board of Adjustment that handles the building codes, but I could be completely wrong. It goes to one of the boards and I, I don't remember which one, right?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so it would be, it would be a council or specialized board. It wouldn't be a P and Z unless you have a zoning issue associated with it. But if you're talking about permits regarding, I mean, like building codes, then we go to your building code standard board. And then if you're talking about text changes, that's again, that's a council thing. We can put that on a future agenda to talk about.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say anytime it comes to policy issues, just to keep the confusion as low as possible, contact your elected officials. We, we can sort of route it from there. Okay, any other questions? Nope. Okay, then we're going to go ahead and move on to the rest of the agenda. That brings us to the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to pull an item from the consent agenda for consideration in the regular agenda?
Making up for lost time, I'm going to ask that items F8, F9, and F11.
Eight, nine, and 11? Okay, eight, nine, and 11 will be considered at the top of the regular agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? I assume it's unanimous. Yeah, okay. Okay.
Sorry.
Consent agenda is unanimously approved. So we will now go to, before we get to the rest of the regular agenda, we will go to the item, that's item F8. Consider Resolution Number 2024-20, Accepting the Proposal of Group Benefit Consultant Services and Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into an Agreement with Hub International for Group Benefit Consultant Services for Medical Dental Vision Life Insurance Employee Assistance Program and Long-Term Disability. Laura Capps, Human Resource Manager.
In order to remain competitive advantage, in order to remain competitive with employee group benefits, the city recently solicited sale proposals from qualified vendors for group benefit consultant services for medical, dental, vision, life insurance, employee assistance program, and long-term disability. Currently, the city is with Texas Health Pool for these services. However, due to concerns regarding the future of the health, Texas Health Benefit Pool and recent fluctuations in rates, the city opted to solicit sale proposals from qualified vendors. Last year, a similar process was undertaken, resulting in a request for proposal for benefit consultants and healthcare vendors prompted by similar concerns regarding the Texas Health Benefit Pool's stability. Despite challenges faced by the Texas Health, they offered a 5% rate decrease, contrasting with widespread rate increases for other pool members and raising questions about the pool's reliability. The request for proposal was posted on our website and bid net direct on January 31st, 2024. Advertisements were run in the Houston Chronicle on January 31st, 2024, and also on February 7th, 2024. The proposal opening was February 21st, 2024. The following companies responded to the RFP: US Beacon, Hub International, Gallagher Benefit Services, and McGriff Insurance Services. Staff members have reviewed the responses in accordance with the following requirements outlined in the RFP. So we graded them on experience and qualifications, proposed services, completion time schedule, and the price of cost. Based on the review of staff, it is recommended that the proposal received from Hub International be accepted and the city manager be authorized to negotiate the terms of the agreement with, for group benefit consultant services for medical, dental, vision, life insurance, employee assistance program, and long-term disability. The initial cost for Hub International to oversee the RFP process for our 2024, 2025 benefits is $3,000. Following this, their services will be provided at a flat rate of $33,000 per year effective October 1st, 2024.
Okay, questions for Human Resources Manager?
Yeah, just, so we're getting a substantial discount this fiscal year, it seems like, for $3,000 and then?
So what they do is, they will do the RFP for our vendors. So they'll go out for bids, so it's not their complete package. They will just, the $3,000 is just for the RFP for the benefit vendors. And then the entire package would be effective October 1st. So this is just for the RFP.
Okay, that, that, I don't know if I didn't read it right or that wasn't clear. But either way, no, that, I think, whatever we're spending, anything we can do to make sure we're not only getting the maybe lower cost, but also best value in packages for our employees, I'm all far behind, right? I mean, we all want happy employees and this is a big deal. I just wanted to see, get that clarified.
Any other questions or discussion from council? The only thing I would ask is, did we, did we reach out to, you know, the question always becomes, you know, what value you can get from this? Did we reach out to other cities to sort of see if they were doing something comparable and what benefits they saw from it?
Yes, sir. So I reached out to our entire HR group, which is 200 and something other cities. There's not a single one that had anything negative to say about Hub. Actually, a majority of them use Hub. The other vendors, there was some back and forth, some liked, some didn't. But Hub was pretty unanimous on being a good vendor.
Okay, well, that was the only question I had. All right. But thank you very much. Unless there's any other questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve Resolution 2024-20.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That brings us up to item F9. Consider Resolution Number 2024-21, Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into a Contract with Quiddity Engineering LLC for the Design, Public Bidding, and Project Management of the 2024 Sanitary Sewer Cleaning and Televising Project. Robert Bassford, Assistant City Manager.
Yeah, good evening, good evening, council. Mayor Warren. During the 2023 bond election, residents endorsed the funding allocation of 3.7 million for water and sewer improvements. These enhancements primarily target the rehabilitation of sanitary piping aged 40 years or older. Prior to replacement, CCTV inspections are commonly conducted to assess the condition of the underground piping. This footage is also used to determine the route in which the engineers will take to rehab said sanitary line. This agenda request pertains to the televising and cleaning of all sanitary sewer lines installed from pre-1970s through the 2020s totaling 188,000 linear feet. City staff proposes the engagement of Quiddity Engineering to oversee the design, bidding, and project management of the 2024 sanitary sewer cleaning and televising project. Quiddity Engineering has maintained a substantial partnership with the city since 2008. Their team employs a meticulous and collaborative process and conceptual design focusing on utility reconstruction. They were also one of the five firms that were shortlisted for this type of work under the RFQ that was sent out for the engineering services. And the total cost for this contract is $189,000.
Great, thank you. Questions and discussion amongst council?
I would just like to say again, having experienced a sewer collapse in front of my house, preventative maintenance is the way to go. And so this is a very smart move to make sure that we're addressing issues before they become a huge, huge problem.
I, I would concur with that. I just wanted to, when I was reading this, this is just for the PMing and project management of it. This isn't for the cleaning and, and repair, right?
Correct.
And this would be paid for with bond funds?
Uh, yes. Some of this will be the bond funds and then a portion of it will be, uh, current utility funds based off of, some of the lines are outside of that bond scope.
Okay. Comes out to be about a dollar a foot?
Any other discussion from council? If there are none, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve Resolution 2024-21.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes. That brings us to item F11. Consider Resolution Number 2024-23, Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into a Contract with Gauge Engineering LLC for the Design and Construction Management of the Solomon Street and Australia Street Reconstruction Projects. Projects. Robert Bassford, Assistant City Manager.
Uh, yes, once again, as a part of the 2023 bond election, residents approved funding allocated 15.5 million for five street reconstruction projects. Solomon Street and Australia Street were among, among those identified designated for replacement within the bond proposal attributed to their aging infrastructure and current state of deterioration. City staff proposes engaging Gauge Engineering to oversee the design, bidding, and construction management of Solomon Street and Australia Street projects. Staff estimates the total cost for this engagement and construction of the project to be around $6.3 million. This estimate includes provisions for inflation and potential change orders. This agenda request pertains to the design and management of the Solomon Street and Australia Street Reconstruction Project. The cost for the design is $481,664.50. Gauge Engineering is a full-service civil consulting firm specializing in providing comprehensive engineering, planning, design, and construction management services for public agencies. With focus on delivering high-quality solutions, Gauge Engineering offers expertise in various core services crucial for infrastructure projects, including roadway planning and design, drainage analysis and design, utility engineering and coordination. With a commitment to providing tailored solution for public agencies, Gauge Engineering is equipped to undertake the design of Solomon and Australia projects, ensuring their successful completion and long-term sustainability.
Okay, discussion amongst council.
How long will the design portion take? Do we know?
About 10 to 11 months.
And Australia and Solomon are after the Congo?
Correct. We would aim for construction to start summer of '25, like right after school gets out so we could redo Solomon and have that done before school starts. That's, that's the goal.
Awesome. Love how we're putting this, putting this bond money to work. It's good stuff.
I noticed part of the engineering includes traffic control plans. I know, I'm almost afraid to ask, do they think they can solve the problem with the traffic around the school?
They can do some great things, is what I've been told.
But, but not miracle workers, I guess. Well.
No, he's shaking his head. He's not a miracle worker over there.
Well, we'll see what they come up with. You never know. All right, any other? Yeah, any, any other questions or discussion on this item from council?
I move to approve Resolution 2024-23.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That finally brings us to the actual regular agenda. Start with item G1, Consideration and Approval of Ordinance 2024-10, Authorizing and Ordering the Issuance of the City of Jersey Village, Texas General Obligation Bonds Series 2024, Prescribing the Terms and Form thereof, Making Other Provisions Regarding Such Bonds, Including the Use of Proceeds Thereof and Matters Incident There Too. Wow, there's a lot of where's and there to's. Austin Blyce, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, John Robach, our financial advisor, is here. He's going to talk more about the bond sales. Obviously, we've talked some about the projects already, but if it's all right with council, I'd like to turn it over to John for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Blyce. Mayor and councilmembers, John Robach, BLK Financial Securities. I do have some great news to report. Before you should have a presentation. That's a summary of the pricing that we, I guess, executed this morning with investors. If you'll turn to the first page, this is the bond buyer index. I always like to show you this so you can see a snapshot of the municipal bond market. Look on the far right in blue there, the current rate is at 3.52%. Slightly higher than what we showed you back in January. We came out here to talk about the, the bonds, about 21 basis points. But I do have good news because we came in lower than that when we sold bonds today. If you'll turn to the next page, we sold 24,640,000 in bonds to generate 25,745,000 in proceeds for the city. And we did this by reducing the total debt service by almost 440,000 what we showed you in January. And we were able to reduce the all cost what we showed you in January, and we were able to reduce the all costs by almost twenty-four basis points, too. So we were very pleased with the results. Um, you see there the principal on the second or third column, the interest, total debt services, and then the debt that's paid for the water and sewer there, about fifty percent of what we sold, we paid for water and sewer revenues, and then your resulting, uh, tax-supported debt service requirements there on the far right. On the next page, we have your sources and uses of funds. Like I said, we sold twenty-four million, six-hundred-and-forty thousand in bonds. Investors willing to pay for a premium for these bonds of about one-point-eight million dollars. Uh, we also funded capitalized interest of four-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, which is basically your debt service payment in September, because you've already levered your tax rate for this year, you don't have those funds to pay that, so we, we funded that with this. Less expenses of two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand gets you the proceeds of twenty-five million, seven-hundred-and-forty-five thousand for projects. And again, like I said, we projected four-point-two-five percent interest rate, came at a four-point-zero-one-one percent, uh, sixteen-year average life. Uh, sold the bonds today, looking to close this on the sixteenth of April, and then that will get us to the next page, last page, is the scheduled events. We've had every date on here. We're here tonight to ask you to approve the sale of the bonds, and then if y'all do that, we'll close about thirty days from now, on April sixteenth, at which point you'll have your funds for the projects. Uh, very pleased with the results today. The market's been relatively stable, um, but we've seen some fluctuations just a- as news comes out about inflation and also with the election coming up, but, but we're very happy with the results. I'm happy to answer any questions you have on the financing. Marcus Deitch, your bond counsel's here. He drafted the resolution we're asking you to approve. If you have any questions on that, I'm sure he'll be happy to answer those questions you have on those.
Great. Thank you so much. Uh, questions or discussion from council?
I just want to say, I realize y'all don't control the bond rate, but high five for the.
It's easy to sell bonds. Y'all are rated triple-A plus, which is one notch below triple-A, so y'all did a great job. Finance staff and, and Mr. Blee, y'all done a great job of managing the city, so.
Just as, as a comparison, I don't know if you know off the top of your head, what are, what are comparable treasury bonds going forward right now?
Oh, gosh, sixteen-year, you're well, you're probably looking at about, about, that's probably the same. But we're about, we're usually about eighty percent off of treasuries.
So you're saying we, we're, we're pretty, pretty competitive with?
We're good investment, let's put it that way.
Yeah. It's, in other words, our borrowing costs are about comparable to the federal government.
Yes, yes. And from S and P, you get the same rating as the US government anyway, so yeah.
And it also helps when your bonds are, have tax benefits.
Yes. Tax exempt, yes, sir.
You may have just done this and I was just trying to capture all the information.
Sorry.
Can you, in as layman as you can do, what is a net premium?
So investors will pay a premium, they'll pay more for a bond. So a bond goes for a thousand, a bond. They'll pay a thousand, one hundred for a bond to get a higher interest rate, lower yield, and so they'll pay you more, so you have to, you can, you're reducing the amount of bonds you have to sell to get that same amount of proceeds. Is that crystal clear? Like mud?
It's good, and I'll go back and re-watch the video until it sinks in.
Well, it, it's basically discount, premium, pay more, higher interest rate, but you lower the, the amount of bonds you could, after issue to get the same.
For folks who have, who have taken out a, a mortgage, I assume it's kind of like buying points?
Correct. Yes, sir.
There you go. There's a, there's, the best way to look at it. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much. Uh, any, any other discussion from council generally about this before we vote? If not, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Now, city finance director and previous council has done fantastic job managing our, our money and our budgets over the years, and that's the only way we're able to get such a good rate. I move to approve ordinance twenty-two-four dash ten.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? Uh, the ordinance passes unanimously. That brings us to item G two, Consider Resolution Number twenty-two-four dash two-four, reviewing and accepting the twenty-twenty-four Utility Fund Capital Improvements Plan and Inspection Reports. Robert Bassford, Assistant City Manager.
Yeah, as, as previously mentioned in, in council, at the end of twenty-twenty-three, the second piece of work that Quiddity Engineering did for the city in conjunction with the impact fee study was a review of our water plants, water distribution, water plant wastewater collection system, all lift stations, to give us a solid capital improvement plan to move forward with the next ten years. As part of this plan, Quiddity spent several hours over the course of a few days with city staff meticulously going through the water and wastewater plants. These final reports are here tonight for the council to review with Quiddity and to formally receive these reports. These reports will be at the heart of the budgeting process over the next several fiscal years. It will guide us in how we maintain our water and sewer infrastructure for the safety and benefit of our residents. It will also be utilized to help forecast future utility needs and future funding requests to help us pay for the projects that are here. This item is to request council's acceptance of these reports as presented by Quiddity Engineering, ensuring the capital improvement plan remains a dynamic and responsive tool, effectively addressing the evolving needs of the community. And we have Ms. Lori here with Quiddity if you have any questions.
All right. Discussion amongst council on this item.
I've been on council for almost six years. I don't think I've seen a document that's so well-documented and provided guidance on our public work system, and given its current state, I'm really glad that we did this. It's, it's, did a very good job of describing the issues.
I do have a question, if you don't mind, for Quiddity.
Go ahead.
Um, we've had several people come up and ask questions and sometimes, um, disagree with some of the stuff on here. I just want to ask what you, how you guys feel about the accuracy of, of your report? I mean, to me, it looks amazing. I think it's very, like what James is saying, it's very in-depth. It's, can you explain a little bit about your process for everyone's benefit?
I would. Um, a fair warning, though, I didn't prepare this report. I started after it was completed, so I'm here to just give you the recap on it. Um, they did go into depth examining the equipment, the facilities, to make sure that everything they put in their inspections is what you guys need to do to main, to keep it maintained. It doesn't include, with the CIP recommendations, we don't include fence repairs and stuff like that, that's for your maintenance side to keep those processes moving forward. So anything that's more in the maintenance, small, is for your city, uh, staff, public works to take care of, and the CIP is to outline those larger projects that really go into your bond funding or your CO funding.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So can I add on to that a little bit? I know, uh, some engineers from Quiddity, they spent days with staff from public works going around to all the facilities, all the lift stations and everything like that to physically lay eyes on everything and see it all and make sure that they're documenting everything and were as thorough as, as they could be on all this.
Thank you. No, and it's very evident that it, of how thorough this is by looking at the pictures, and it's clear that somebody was here taking pictures and, and all sorts of stuff, and even with the captions, I don't quite know what all of it is, but I trust what I'm reading here.
Yeah. I, I assume, you know, where the plan is to put this up with all the other plans and studies we have on the, on the city website, I would encourage anyone who's said, you know, do we really know whether we're taking a look at things and making sure we're checking on our infrastructure to make sure that it's what needs to be fixed now versus later? Go look at that report. There, there's guys like taking pictures, close-up pictures of valves in this report. I mean, it's, it is extraordinarily detailed and has a full breakdown of costs across the board for work that needs to be done. So if you're wondering, like, do we have a good sense of what we need to spend over the next ten years in order to maintain our infrastructure? Yeah. Yeah. It's pretty detailed, so, um, I'm, I'm impressed.
Uh, and as I mentioned before, I mean, years ago, we didn't have something to this level of detail, and decisions were made to postpone capital improvement projects that are now costing us tons of money to repair. So I've always been a big proponent of preventative maintenance and, you know, making sure that we're staying on top of things as it comes, because it's much, much easier and much less expensive to address small issues, um, before they become very, very large issues.
I would, uh, to piggyback on all that, I would hope that staff considers doing one of these every five years or whenever we do an impact fee study, just because of the depth, um, that this provides on the infrastructure.
And I'll just say, if anyone wants to know what it looks like if you don't do this, uh, I don't know if, if you've been paying attention to news out of the city of Houston the last couple of weeks, they had a massive failure of a wastewater treatment plant. Um, if you complain about some of the smells coming from our aging wastewater treatment plant now, just imagine if it fails, it, it's a, the whole situation stinks. So, sorry, I couldn't help it. Um, unless there are any other, I know, I know, wah-wah. Unless there are any other comments or questions from council, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve Resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-four.
I'll second.
We have, yeah, a motion from James Singleton, second from Michelle Mitchum. Uh, any, any other discussion? Okay. Um, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? Uh, the resolution passes unanimously. So that brings us to item G three, Consider Resolution Number twenty-two-four dash two-five, Appointing Members to the Serve on the City of Jersey Village Twenty-two-four Bond Committee. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to appoint members to the bond, uh, Twenty-two-four Bond Committee that, uh, the requirements in, uh, of that committee were set up and approved during the consent agenda. The committee will consist of seven members. The committee shall be charged with analyzing the feasibility and recommending, uh, to city council that they call an election for the purpose of passing general obligation bond, uh, authorization. Such analysis shall include examining what project shall be recommended for placement before the voters for consideration, as well as recommending bond amounts and an issuance for the time schedule. The, this item is to appoint members. Uh, in your packet were included, uh, applications of those residents who are interested in seeking appointment to this committee. They include Aaron Guermo, Ger?
Guerrero.
Yeah, Guerrero. Beverly Peterson, Gary Habiger, Jennifer Wit- Whitner, Lyle Henkel, Peter Johnson, Rick Faircloth, Sean Willis, Susan Edwards, Krista Guerrero, Edward Locke, Curtis Haverdy, and Charles Daniels. Those last three names were late, and you do have a copy of their application at your place. And with that, I'll open it for council's discussion.
Lori, um, is there a provision? I, I, I know we approved it during the consent agenda, but is there a provision for alternates?
No, there was just a seven-member, um, board.
Thank you.
How do y'all want to do this?
Um, I've made some notes on some of the candidates that piqued my interest. Um, if you guys have notes, maybe we just each go along and then have an open discussion?
Throw a slate like we normally do, yeah.
All right. Um, I, I had an interest in Beverly Peterson. I like that she served formerly, um, on Parks and Rec in the nineties, so I feel like she has a good understanding of the longevity of projects. Um, both the Guerreros are, I, I like their interest in the JB Stars. I feel like having somebody on the board that has a, an interest in the pool is going to be a, a voice that we probably should consider. So either I am Aaron or Krista. Um, I can speak to Krista personally. She was PTO president for PTO, um, I mean, for Post Elementary, and now she is the same for Cook Middle School, so if that does not show her dedication, like she can get stuff done and organize. Um, I also was interested in Sean Willis. Uh, I like that he said he was interested in the trails and outdoor spaces, avid runner, so I feel like there's another voice of projects that specifically can kind of piece into that one. Um, Edward Locke, he is already on Parks and Recs. I don't know if we wanted to spread the wealth, but he is, uh, interactive in Booster Club, JBHS, and then, um, Susan Edwards, uh, she's been here a long time and she really knows the city in and out, and I feel like she shows up often to, um, council meetings and really has shown that she cares a lot about this city and its development.
I was also, I, I agree, um, with the majority of those, especially with, uh, Susan Edwards. I know she has a lot of experience, especially when it comes to the pool, and not just from a swim team and swim lessons perspective, but also if I'm correct, um, oh my gosh, water, aerobics.
Yep.
Sorry about that. Um, I also was going to mention Curtis Haverdy. Uh, just to get a different perspective, I think it's important that maybe we, you know, hit all the, um, check all the boxes, different people of different walks of life, different age groups, different demographics.
Well, he was also a former council member, so he kind of understands the ways of working.
Yeah. Um, it, at the risk of perhaps throwing a, someone off the island, maybe one of the Guerreros, although I think they both have a lot to add, um, I think I'd go with Jennifer Whitner. I think she was, uh, contacted most of us a lot during the original bond with a lot of ideas. Um, and, and I like this mix, Michelle, that, that you have offered, because it offers people that have been in the neighborhood for a while and people that have moved here, and we can get, and we can get a number of, uh, different perspectives on that committee.
And I will agree, she had mentioned Beverly Peterson. Um, I spoke, um, with that, with her, and it's not just her, but she also has grandchildren in the neighborhood well, as well, so I think that kind of covers a different, like you're saying, a different perspective, because I don't know, um, about everyone else with that. I mean, I know the Guerreros do have children, but I think her, uh, Ms. Peterson's, they're younger from the, uh, conversation I had.
Jennifer also has two children, two young kids, and she's the speech pathologist at post, so she made a note in her application that she both works and lives in Jersey Village. Also, go speech pathologist. Really, there was a lot of good applications, and some of the ones I didn't mention were just simply because they didn't provide a lot of detail. There was nothing negative to say about, I mean, the, I love that we have a selection to go through. Um, I really don't think that there's a wrong choice in any of these candidates.
How many would that be if we did? I would say Krista Guerrero is the president of the swim team. Um, I mean, not to say that Aaron's not great, but, just kidding, but if you're going to pick one. But if you were going to, I'm just saying, if we're, if we got to, if we're going to pick seven, I think for me, I would say Krista Guerrero, Jennifer Whitner, Beverly Peterson, Sean Willis, Susan Edwards, and Curtis Haverdy, and I've lost count if that's six or seven.
Edward?
Susan, yeah.
I, I like the rep from the Parks and Rec as well.
I have all seven of those as my, with check marks, so I'm good with those seven.
Someone going to want to read them off one more time, full names, just because I think there may have been some confusion when, I didn't know if someone was referring to Susan Edwards or Edward Locke when they were, just said Edward.
Beverly Peterson, Jennifer Whitner, Krista Guerrero, Sean Willis, Susan Edwards, Curtis Haverdy, Edward Locke. Let's.
Okay. So are you making a motion to approve the resolution with that slate?
So I had.
Oh, sorry, was there someone else wanted to?
I'm trying to figure out the difference between my list and hers. Um, I had Beverly Peterson, Krista Guerrero, Sean Willis, Susan Edwards, Curtis Haverdy, Rick Faircloth, and Jennifer Whitner. Rick Faircloth, in addition on mine, I'm missing somebody off your list, I haven't figured out who yet.
Edward.
Edward Locke, okay.
I think Jennifer, um, was just saying, having somebody from Parks and Rec to tie in their projects and, and thoughts for bond, but I don't.
Yeah, on that list, I think Edward is the only one that's on Parks and Rec, right? Okay. Then I'm good with that list.
Can I make a motion? Is everybody okay with that?
Lori, I assume you have the list. Perfect.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five, appointing the members according to the list Lori has. To serve on the City of Jersey Village Twenty-two-four Bond Committee.
Second, all second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. All right. That brings us to, uh, item G four, Discuss and Take Appropriate Action Concerning the Appointment Process for the Twenty-two-four Comprehensive Plan Update Committee. Austin Blee, City Manager.
Mayor, councilors, uh, the comprehensive plan is the guiding document that helps us.
that helps us plan for the next 15 to 20 years and make improvements to ensure the city remains a desirable place to live, where property values increase and the quality of life remains. As we look to the coming year, we're looking to have another Comprehensive Planning Update Committee. We've submitted some grants to help us fund that, and we're looking towards getting this committee rolling. So provision in the plan says that we have to update it every four years. Accordingly, the next committee meet, appointment should be made no later than this July, so the 2025 plan can be adopted in 2025. The committee, in the past, has consisted of seven regular members and three alternates. Three regular members of the committee must be members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So as part of the committee appointments made back in July, the last time we did this, the council conducted interviews with the interested applicants. Council requested that the applicants be prepared to deliver a three-to-five-minute presentation concerning their qualifications, in addition to providing an explanation of why they want to be on the committee. So tonight, this item is to determine if council's desire is the same as last time, if we should have interviews or not from the interested applicants. And if interviews are needed, council will need to set a date and time for those. Last interviews were conducted at a special meeting when we did it back in 2020. Additionally, council will need to set the process for selecting the three members of the P and Z to serve on this committee. Once the process is all decided, we'll go forward with gathering the applications from the interested applicants.
Okay, discussion amongst council.
Just a thought, as far as for selecting planning and zoning members is, would anybody be, would anybody disagree with letting the Chair of Planning and Zoning handle that with planning and zoning? I don't know, I mean, Drew, that's your group, right? Isn't that your liaison?
Yeah, I'm the liaison, I have no problem with that. I think that's what happened 2020.
From what I recall, because I think I was on that. I think that's what it was. Rick, yeah.
And we'll, we'll have a P and Z meeting in April at some point. We don't have a date set yet, but that was, we were thinking we would have, let them select their own.
This document becomes the roadmap for the future of the city, and we have used it numerous times to make some very big decisions. And I think we should continue the interview process.
I would agree.
I'd agree as well. I think being a part of that last group and the number of meetings we had, but I thought we got good variety of perspective and good interaction. So I, I think if we did the same process.
Absolutely. When would council like to do those interviews? I think we would probably look to start probably in August for the first meeting of the group. But when would council like to make those appointments, do those interviews, and make those appointments?
Would we have to do the interviews prior to the July meeting, so you could get started in August? Or would you start after the August meeting?
Yeah, doing the, appointing the committee in July would probably be ideal. So we'd want to do the meet, the interviews at some point before those, either earlier that, like a 5:30 meeting start for those, depending upon the applications, I suppose, how many we get. But if we want to do it the same night as the council meeting, or if we want to do it on a completely different day.
If I recall, we'll probably have to do a different day if we're, if that's the same calendar as budget.
And I think for the budget meeting, we're meeting on the Friday before. Going over everything on that Friday before the regular council meeting, so we wouldn't be having an all-night marathon session.
I recommend that staff look at space availability, send us an email and look at some date between mid-May to mid-June. Or mid-June to, mid, yeah, mid-May to mid-June. That gives us the next probably eight to 10 weeks to solicit applications.
I agree with James.
Yeah, so before we move on, I just, I need to clarify something. In terms of the P and Z, I wanted to make sure that I was on the same page. I thought that what I would be doing is putting an, an item on their agenda in April for them to discuss the three people that they want to send. Is that, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. And in terms of the other, I can look at some dates and get an email out to council to get a quorum together. And it will be a special meeting.
Marriage makes you stronger, working with Jen makes you better.
All right, any, any, obviously, there's no, other than just the discussion to be had, there was no other action. Is that everything we needed to cover?
I believe we have everything we need.
Okay, then we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. That is item G5. Consider resolution number 2024-26, awarding the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with CNA Construction LLC for the 2024 Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project. Robert Basford, Assistant City Manager.
On March 6, 2024, city staff received bid documents for the removal and replacement of existing sanitary manholes, resetting of existing 15-inch sanitary sewer, CIPP lining of existing 24-inch sanitary sewer RCP, pavement restoration, and restoration of disturbed areas at identified sections along Rio Grande, Wall, and Crawford Street. Oh, and Tahoe Drive. Two responsive bids were received for the project, CNA and AR Turnkey. The scope of the work at a minimum will include the following activities. Mobilization, site preparation, tree mailbox, and existing pavement protection and traffic control. Remove and dispose of existing curb, concrete sidewalks, pavements, the existing 24-inch RCP. Install 24-inch RCP, reset the 15-inch sanitary sewer, and install type-C sanitary sewer manholes. Setting up a temporary sewage bypass pump system, and then installing concrete curb, sidewalk, driveway, and pavement to utilize the cement stabilize upgrade. City staff and consulting engineering firm PEA Group worked together to ensure bidding was conducted in compliance with all applicable federal and state and local standards. CNA Construction LLC submitted the lowest responsible bid for the project. CNA Construction LLC is a credible company that comes with a recommendation from the consulting engineering firm PEA. The cost of performing the sanitary sewer improvements will be paid through approved bond funding as this section of the line is a part of the, of the bond. Total cost presented includes alternative extras of $94,000 that will be evaluated during construction to determine if they are needed.
Okay, discussion amongst council on this item.
I just had a question. Does any part of this, because I know a lot of times, sometimes we're talking about the street projects, but does this affect anybody's, what, is this, any of this going to affect anybody's personal property? Like the, you know, when we've done streets before, and it affects their grass and their irrigation systems? Or does this, is this further away from that?
This is all in the right way, but it would impact grass, irrigation, that thing.
Can we make sure upfront that we're going to replace grass with grass and not the green weird spray? And that we're going to repair stuff, leave it as we found it?
Sod, sod was in the bid, if I'm not mistaken? Yeah.
I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, that, that's been a part of our standard spec since Seattle Street. Yeah.
Since the great paint-on-grass debacle of 2023.
The only other thing that I would recommend, just kind of staying on top of, is communications with, with the residents. I know that was a little bit of an issue on our street initially, but just watch that.
We'll have a, similar to what was with, when, on your street there, we'll have a page on the website dedicated to the updates, and we'll also set up an email list. So anytime we post an update, it goes to everybody whose email that we have. As long as we have their email address, they'll be on that list.
I move to approve resolution 2024-26.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item G6. Discuss and take appropriate action concerning a progress report from the owners of the property located at 15830 Northwest Freeway, Jersey Village, Texas, concerning the progress on the performance of the work acquired under ordinance 2024-01, which found the structures on the property to be substandard and a public nuisance. Ordered Speedy Stop Food Stores Limited or the true owners of the property to abate the substandard and dangerous structures on the property, authorizing the city to demolish the structure on the property if owner fails to abate the substandard and dangerous structure on the property, authorizing the city to assess a lien against the property for the cost of the demolition, and making other findings and provisions related thereto, the city building official.
Hello, my name's Scott Williams, I'm with Safe Build. I'm stepping in tonight because our employee that handles Jersey Village has had a family emergency. I spoke with her, everything seems to be moving forward. I haven't heard anything to, that they are making progress, moving forward, and cleaning it up.
Any questions from council for the building official? The only question I would ask is, have they already submitted an application for a permit for the work to be done?
For the remodel?
Or, or any permit for any work over there?
I think what they, the only thing they've done is the cleanup work, related to the cleanup work.
They've submitted plans, okay. I just remembered that that was, if I remember correctly, that was one of the milestones that were in the ordinance.
They have a commission, building permit.
Okay, okay, good. Just wanted to be sure they were, according to the ordinance, were, were actually coming in on that.
So that, it does appear they are in compliance with that. Their permit to actually do the interior work has not been issued, the plans are all under review, but there, there was time between, for that still, so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure they submitted whatever. I, I couldn't remember the exact, what the, what the requirement was for that first deadline, but, okay, good. I mean, it certainly, I mean, I, it was the only time I've ever seen the inside of it, it.
And our fire department will be doing the inspection, correct? For the, what do we call it? The fire pieces of that, for that inspection?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to do a certificate of occupancy. There's not much fire-related in there. It's just too small of a building for us to have sprinklers or alarms, but we will be part of that inspection process.
I mean, from the looks of it, it's metal and cinder block, so.
During the, during the remodel process, it will be inspected. And all the, all the inside will be inspected at the, at the end. As it's going along, at the end of the project, before the, as a part of the building final, then that's when fire will come out, make their inspection, and then once everything is deemed okay, then the certificate of occupancy will be issued.
Okay, and can, just to clarify, when y'all do your inspections on commercial properties, all of those are done in person, not via any type of Zoom or FaceTime? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Building Department will be doing a much more detailed inspection. This building does not have a lot of fire code requirement, but the building department will be doing a much more detailed inspection.
And to be honest, the building did look sound to begin with. It wasn't like it was in extreme collapse. So everything that's going to be happening is going to be an interior remodel. So they'll be putting up studs and walls, running all the electrical, mechanical, and plumbing in the ceilings. That'll all get looked at, and then they come in with the finish.
Yeah, I was actually surprised, it like, looks a lot better on the inside than it does on the outside, so.
It's the paint.
Yeah.
What is our next timeline for?
It left off at 45 days, which is where we're at now. So council would need to discuss when they want them to come back and what they would like them to have done by that timeframe.
If they've been compliant with our plan so far, we can take no action and wait to see if they, if everything completes, correct?
Right, if, if as long as they're following the ordinance and the order as it's done now, you can do that. And then, but built into a plan that lasts more than 90 days, which this one was, it was a 45-day time period, then this one report is fine. So unless you want to extend that reporting, then you don't have to take any action right now. You just go see what's been, what's been presented to you. If you want to set a date for an additional report, you're, you're free to do that.
If we take no act, sorry.
I think just due to the nature of the longevity of this situation, I, I feel like it would be in our best interest to continue on a plan, but I'm okay with it not being as close together it was before.
And you don't have to, I mean, and, and the reporting can be just a, like a document in your, you know, consent or the, or the city manager's packet, it doesn't have to be a presentation every time.
If we take no action, do we have to start the process over?
No, but you also want to be careful not to, not to overstep what's already been in the order. So if you can just request that the applicant or the representative submit that to you, then, I mean, I think that you'll keep, be in line with, you know, following what's in the order. The problem's going to happen if there's, if there's a violation of what's been contemplated in the order, which doesn't seem like that's there now, so.
Just out of curiosity, you know, they've submitted plans, but there's nothing requiring them to actually move forward, is that correct?
Well, I mean, they're, what do you mean, like the, the order itself, so it, there's.
They've got a permit, they've got a building that looks like it does. But they've submitted plans, but the way I, the way I've seen it, and the way I've seen some structures around Jersey Village, you submit for your permit, so now what's preventing them from choosing to just continue to sit with the building in the same condition and not actually do anything with it?
So, two things. One, I don't have the copy of the ordinance for the order in front of me, but what I'm guessing is that plans that need to be submitted, that the renovations or the repairs need to be done in accordance with that plan. So that's where they're going to fall in line. If they don't do that, then you're back at square one with this property, which is going to, your building official at any time can make an issue report to you and suggest that you find it to be substandard in whatever capacity. Whatever, whatever, you know, building code or, or maintenance code is, is at issue, that can be brought to you, and you can make a determination in another order. And so at that point, I mean, that process keeps going. The point of the whole thing is that there's, you have found that there's a safety issue at the, at the property. And so anytime there's a safety issue, there's, the property owner can always be notified and work together with the city to do that. If that, if that doesn't happen, then you have this process to address that safety issue. So that's, that's a long answer to say that you just go through the process again.
Which temporarily, temporarily corrected by offense. If the permit is issued, remind me how many days, once they commence work, if work stops, how many days is the permit now considered abandoned? 90?
No. Per the building code, when a permit's issued, they have 180 days since, they have 180 days after work has stopped. So if the permit's issued on January 1, and they do nothing with it, then there are 180 days until the permit times out or expires. So it's been my experience in the past to, when you have a structure like this that's on everybody's radar, not just to rely on the building permit and it timing out. Because every, every action, every day somebody's out there working, every inspection gives 180-day extension to the permits, all the permits involved with the project. If you're wanting to track, track this project, my suggestion would be, come back in a reasonable amount of time, 30 days, 45 days, have a report. Then you can see how much work is being done, are inspections being made? Is, is, is the process moving forward? And then if we come, then, then now you're breaking down to a 30 or 45-day period to where, hey, nothing's happened in the last 45 days. There's been no progress in 45 days. Then that puts you in more control of, hey, okay, do we need to stop what's going on and move it into a substandard condition or a substandard case and start working as that, that way? As opposed to just simply relying on the building permit and the expirations built into the code.
So our options are like 30, 60, 90. 45 would be hard to, hard for us because of the schedule of our meetings to enact. But this is, this is an important issue. I don't think it's, because they are compliant right now, I don't think it's an issue that council really needs to work on every month. If it's in the consent agenda, then 30 days, that's fine. We throw it in the consent agenda, if we need to, we pull it. Otherwise, I would recommend 90 days.
I was going to split the difference, kind of go every, at least every couple months. So like by May 10th or so, in time for the May 15th agenda? I don't know what your timing on agenda would be in May.
It's usually, that would work if it, what, what day is the 10th on?
The, the 10th is a Friday, the 15th is because of canvassing?
No, then, then you'd probably want to back it up just a little bit, like around the 8th.
Okay.
I mean, you could just do 45 days, and even though we don't have another meeting coming up for a few weeks after that, that, I think that's fine.
Yep. Do we need to amend the ordinance?
No, it's, A, that's not on the agenda to do that, so, but I would just say, I mean, as long as you're good to have a 45-day update, then you're fine.
Do we need to take any formal action for that, Lori?
I think that we should have a motion saying that that's what we want.
I think that we should have a motion saying that that's what we want, but for me, I'm just going to say what I think. It might be easier to track, just to have it on the consent agenda every meeting moving forward. That way it doesn't get lost. The motion should be that we require the, the owner to prepare a report, uh, do, you know, say.
Even if it's just an email saying that we, we haven't moved anything on, you know, we're still waiting on whatever, but just some kind of contact, I think that's fair.
And that way they can send in their report, and I'll put it on consent. If y'all want to pull it, you pull it. If not, we're good.
The item on the agenda is to accept this, this particular report. So future things we're wanting to come on, I think what you need to do is just work with the property owner on that and then have them come on. And, because if you start, I think you start getting into requiring reporting. It's not specific in the order that I saw. And so I would, what I would do is just accept the report.
It's actually, uh, discuss and take appropriate action.
Concerning a progress report from the owners, and it's about this particular one that's submitted to you. And so I, what I would say is for ongoing reporting, that you, that you just work with the property owner and get that done. And this, and this consent agenda item is fine, that's going to satisfy whatever you want, but in terms of the order, the one you have presented, you just accept the progress report as it's presented to you.
So. So then, can I?
So again, that's, that was language dropped from the ordinance that you had. Your ordinance is not, you're not doing, you're not amending the ordinance, the order at all. You're, you're receiving the report on it. I think that, if you're going to make any motion, you accept it, and that's it. You're not, it doesn't close that order because the building is still under repair. The ongoing reporting is something that you can work out with the property owner to have on the consent agenda, however you want to do it.
So without making any kind of motion, we can say that we, we can discuss what direction we're giving staff. So we're, our discussion is directing the city secretary to require a report in the same manner that she requires it of department heads for every meeting.
Right.
I think this has been a productive relationship so far, um, so I'd like to just keep that going and.
And the next time we put this on the agenda, let's make it, uh, concerning this or other progress reports. It says a progress report, it doesn't necessarily specify which one, but.
The problem, the problem is your, the order you had didn't specify about reporting. So when you're coming in, you want to, you know, amend the order, you don't have the engine, and that's a specific process you go through through that. So, and this is not about, it's about receiving this particular report that was done in that order. So, yeah, it needs to be clear. If you're wanting to do ongoing reporting, then that, A, that probably should have been in the order you did, but then second, then we need to make sure that ordinance, the agenda is very clear about what is your trying to plan to do.
Where's your fill-in tonight?
If, 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 if she would have been here, you guys probably wouldn't have even gotten this far. She would have kicked you all out for somebody.
He's not wrong. He's not wrong. Okay, so, um, I mean, do we even need to have a motion to accept the report? We've got it, okay. It's done, all right. Unless anyone else has got any other mayhem to get into, um. Let me just, before we get into the mayor and council comments, I want to do a little rearranging here just a little bit, because I think that, after discussing with Austin, I think it might not necessarily be necessary. My understanding, Austin, is that regarding the items that were considered for the, the executive session, that there's not really anything to act on, correct?
Nothing to act on for Ters two. For Ters three, there is an action item, but that information was already sent to council. I don't know if council wants to go into executive session to discuss that or not.
Thank you. So that, that's the question, is, does any council member, we, we, we believe that there's not really any need to go into an executive session regarding either of those items, and that we can just take action without the need for executive session? Is there any council member who disagrees?
And so, hey, Mayor, if, if we're going to take action on something that's considered an executive, you have, you have to go into executive session for that, because at some point you have to discuss it, and you, unless you're wanting to discuss it open.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Is there anything, I guess, let me rephrase the question. Does anyone feel like they need to discuss something privately that is part of the executive session that's noticed, or do they, because?
Can, can we just make this public discussion? Because I think, I think we can make this public.
The point is, the, the Ters three would be a real estate exception. Do you want to make that, what would be protected, you know, the, the things we're talking about there, do you want to make that public by discussing it here? If you don't want to do that, then we need to go in executive session to make sure that any kind of negotiation that you might want to have is not, is not made public at this point.
Because of the materials, I don't think there is a discussion.
So if you're, if you're final, that item when it comes up, if you want to discuss it openly, you can do that open, and you don't have, you don't have to go into executive session.
I don't think we need an executive session. Does anyone disagree? Okay. So, uh, if, if everyone agrees with that, then I just, I, I wanted to discuss that first before we went to the public comment, because then we, yeah, I just wanted to get, get that clarified real quick, uh, or before we went to mayor and council comments. Okay, um, so then we'll go ahead and move on to mayor and council comments. I'm going to start down at this end with council member McCray.
I'm good.
Council member Singleton.
Well, congratulations to Kevin Sullivan. Kevin has, is very well-deserved for a reward.
Council member Lawson.
I second those congratulations. Want to wish everyone a happy spring, which takes place in about 25 hours from right now, um, and happy Easter after that, and check the city calendar and those things around you. We've got a lot of great events, uh, coming up in the city and around the city, um, and signups for things this summer, so get in there and take part. There's, we live in a special place, a great community, and a lot of gatherings are coming up.
Council member Shepherd.
Um, I'll just second. Drew, we have Founder's Day coming up in April. I think tickets are on sale for that now, so be sure to, to, to get that. And then we have, um, concert in the park this Saturday. So if you are a Waylon and Willie fan, uh, come on out. I think it should be a good time.
Mayor Proton Mitchum.
I will, um, second all of that information. I also just wanted to say once again that I appreciate all of the applications we have to these special boards and committees. Um, I love seeing new names, new faces. The involvement just seems to keep dialing up in Jersey Village for the better, and it just really like, it, it's really, really nice. Um, I see our, one of our candidates, Ms. Connie is, has come to all the meetings, so it's, it's just really nice to see the community involvement in such a positive manner. So, thank you, guys. And, um, that's about it.
All right. I'll just, I'll echo the congrats to Captain Sullivan, um, and, um, again, also thank everyone who applied for that bond committee. It's very important work, uh, and I'm looking forward to seeing, um, how that goes. So considering that we're not going into executive session, I'm going to go ahead and move down to, um, item L1 on the agenda. Discuss and take appropriate action on items discussing, well, take, on items regarding information from a business prospect that the city seeks to locate in Jersey Village, Ters number two, and economic development negotiations, including the possible purchase, exchange, or va, or value of real property related thereto. Austin Blee, city manager.
Aaron, councilors, there's nothing needed on this item.
So we're going to go ahead and move on, if everyone's okay. Then we're going to go to item L2. Consider resolution 2024 dash two seven, approving the sale of land in tax increment reinvestment zone number three, and authorizing the city manager to sign any necessary documents to complete the sale. Austin Blee, city manager.
Mayor and councilors, we have the resolution 2024 dash 27 in front of you. If anybody would want a motion on, on one of the bids.
Seeing as there's only one bid, I think we should move forward with that bid.
I'd agree with that. So I'm going to assume, is, is that just common or?
Just, Justin said we'd have discussions. That's my discussion.
That, that contract will come back to council, won't it? If not, then you need to, need to say the, at least some terms of it. The contract will come back to council, correct?
It is right, right?
It is right, Al.
Are we considering the actual contract, or are we just considering whether to accept the bid?
So the resolution here before the council, uh, says that the city will sell the property and, according to the terms in the contract, and the city manager is authorized to make the appropriate necessary steps to finalize the sale of the property.
In other words, the contract hasn't been negotiated yet, correct?
I.
So it, it will come back once you've taken care of that, right?
We have the draft version.
Yeah, the draft's in here. I moved that we approve resolution 2024 dash 27.
But you have to tell me what, now you have to say what amount, that's.
Yeah.
So.
And the past thing we said for the amount that was bid.
That you discussed in executive session. So that, since you haven't, you don't have that discussion now, so now you need to, you need to take a motion to approve a contract in an amount that wouldn't, council would approve.
Making that movement, motion to approve the contract to sell the property to Marila Alvez for the, his bid amount.
I think you have to say the bid amount.
Okay, for $65,000.
So the, the, the motion is to approve the resolution for the amount of 65?
Just to make sure we're clear.
So, so this, so this usually works, and why, and there was even a public comment about this. For councils, you can, you can, for real estate purposes, if you're, if you're negotiating the purchase of property, then you, the state law allows you to have some protections on that. We had this teed up for that, and again, you only have one bid for this particular property in this Ters zone, which is, you're the authority to approve those contracts. Because we did not go into executive session, we had no discussion about it, but since you're about to prove a contract binding the city for something, then you have, you have to give up the terms of what that contract's going to be. That's why it's in the, to talk about the name and then the amount, so.
Which all that becomes public once the sale's completed.
Right, but the problem, the problem is what we would have done is we would have talked it through the different values, and even if you wanted to go to that amount, which we hadn't even had discussion. So for you to say that there's a, to approve the amount of the bid received, and we had, the public's not aware of the bid received at this point.
Yeah, so I have no problem saying it, because it's going to be public anyway. So that was my motion. My motions are approved, was it, it's not here anymore, 2024 dash 27, to Marila Alvez for $65,000.
We good? Okay, so we have a motion.
Bid, so, yeah, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council?
Just to clarify, just because we only had one bid with it being in a Ters, it doesn't mean we have to do anything with the property, correct?
No, that's part of the discussion. You don't have to, I mean, the motion's second, you don't have to approve the contract. You don't have to approve the amount or anything.
We can reject the bid.
Just wanting to clarify.
So just to be clear, we have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion on this? Okay. All of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? Resolution passes unanimously. I believe that is it as far as the agenda is concerned, so. Meeting adjourned.